I'm going to call the city council meeting to order. I'd like to ask Pastor Cody Edger from Cornerstone Word of Life Church to come forward for the invocation.
Y'all pray with me, please. Father God, we just thank you for this awesome time to come together and hear about the future growth in this community. That maybe there's concerns or complaints or anything like that. Father God, I just thank you that you lead this council with guidance today. Father God, with love and peace. And I just thank you, Lord, that they are led by what's best for the community, best for the people of this area, Father God. They're not making decisions out of their own agenda or their own desires. But what truly is going to lead for peace and prosperity for our area, Father God. And I thank you that as they serve this community, they are blessed by it for their sacrifice, Lord. I thank you for it. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. May I join in the praise? I pledge allegiance to the flag, that is high as the states of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please. Mayor Finley?
Here.
Councilmember Robleski?
Here.
Councilmember Spears?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Here.
Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Bartlet?
Here.
Councilmember Denzine?
Yes.
Councilmember Seifert?
Here.
Are there any amendments to the agenda?
There are. There's an addition of an appointment to the Recreation Advisory Board that I understand that Councilperson Seifert would like to add tonight. And we also are going to remove an item, listen to please, Resolution Number 2023-308 that would retire K-9 Bruno. He's going to work for us one more month, so we'll bring that back for the council.
Okay, and with those amendments, the agenda is approved. Next, we have minutes number 2023-17-RG. Move to approve?
Thank you.
Okay, motion by Robleski, second by Spears. Any discussion? Ready for vote. Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
And the minutes are approved. We do not have any presentation in award, so we will move to public comments. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak. Please state your name and the district in which you live when you approach. And if you've reserved time, you'll get to go first. And we have a comment card first submitted by Bernadette Mayer from District Five.
Good evening. First, again, I'm Bernadette Mayer, District Five, from Heatherwood subdivision. First of all, make some initial comments, okay? I'm not at these council meetings to be adversarial. I study the issues and voice my concerns. I'm pro-small business, but do not wish to have outside developers and interest groups continue to negatively influence how our city is run. City Council states they want resident feedback, yet now our public comment time at these council meetings is now back to three minutes, which was an idea from outside our community. Do not treat residents who make comments at city council meetings being negative for our city. Sometimes you hear things, and although there are people that will send you a quick email or whatever, when people study the issues and give you feedback, sometimes you're going to not hear that from some of your elite circles. So anyhow, I just wanted to make those initial comments. So most recent city council meeting and city council work session, the need for all council members to speak into their mic and enunciate clearly. At the last city council meeting, Greg Shaw, there were several comments I couldn't hear from him. And when I tried to speak louder, the police chief was walking up and chided me for saying something. It's like, well, I guess I need to come up here and like put my ear like this so that people will say something. In the meantime, questions during the council work session were asked of Mr. Roger Bellamy, and he did not go to a mic. I watched the entire session of that because I've, oh, Madison recorded it. And I've got the 10 pages of notes to show that I did go through it all. I watched the entire session, and I couldn't hear any of his comments. And to be honest, Mayor Finley should have also been able to respond on why certain funds were drawn, which exceeded budget and approved them out, greatly exceeded. Okay, I see some communication issues where plans should be made way ahead. Budgeting should have time for adjustments. Individuals from the mayor down should be communicating problems so corrections can be made. The mid-year budget was way off, a lot of areas, and somehow that should have been seen coming and should have had some adjustments before that time. I see the council voting on things with less than full information. For example, the Hexagon building and plans for having the fire station there. The mayor and fire chief should have been discussing the best location instead of city council purchasing the building and oops, can't use it for the fire station. I'm running out of time. I didn't get to all my stuff, but that gives you a taste of some of the things that I'm concerned about. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayer. Do we have other comment cards turned in, Lisa? Thank you. Next, we have Stephen Monks.
Before I forget, I'd like to just thank you all for what you do. It's a job with many moving parts. I know it's very complex, but thank you for what you do. It is the first time I've been at this meeting. I just have a couple of items I'd like to bring to your attention with some recommendations.
And you're in District Five, correct?
District Five, yes.
Okay, thank you.
The first has to do with a neighbor who is at a higher elevation than me dumping a lot of pool water in my direction.
Pool water?
Pool water.
Okay.
Pool water. Now, this, we moved here in 2002, had no problems until he put a pool in. Your code folks came out a couple of years ago and had him move the hose that he was dumping the water with. And that seemed to help a little bit, but then a new owner came in 14 months ago, and the hose disappeared. And this has been causing problems where there's water actually running through the crawl space of the house, where you can stand up, I have a workshop in there, and also running underneath the deck. So in March, I tapped into Ulysses, and he and one of your engineers and one other individual came out, and we all had this discussion about what was going on. And there was a letter dispatched from you guys on the 5th of April, I think. It might have been at the end of March, but I've got the 5th of April. The neighbor seems to be non-responsive because I've continued to see a lot of water dumping. I'll just give you two examples. On the 18th of July, it was seven hours pumping out of a two-inch hose, going both down his driveway and right at my house. Now, I had sometime earlier put a drain next to the house so it could divert water because of the problem I was having, just trying to be a good neighbor, okay? And then I'll give you the one other example, 17 August. Let's see. I measured it. I was able to measure it, or at least most of the water, I guess. Thirteen hundred and twenty gallons in a period of six hours. Oh, that's that one. Now, I've got to go on to the second one, which is, on the other side, we have a house that's trying to be sold. Well, they're doing two things. They're selling it, and they've got it as an Airbnb. And we're seeing people come into that house. It's a five-bedroom house, a big house, and they're advertising 15 people. And they've got 11 beds. And so what we're seeing is, let's say, rowdy people often that are playing basketball in the rain. It looks like a fraternity club. And I don't think we'd move into this neighborhood had we thought that there would be an Airbnb.
Mr. Monks, you're out of time.
Okay, you got it.
Email me the address, the street address, that would help.
Okay.
And then we'll follow up on that.
Perfect, thank you.
Of your house and of the area that your house you're talking about, please.
Both houses, aren't you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sure, the next comment card is Walt Anderson.
Good evening, council. Thank you for your time. I'm in your district, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I'm representing residents and merchants of downtown Madison that we'd like to get the Christmas parade back through downtown. I realize that you have a feeling that it would be safer on Hughes Road. It's not any darker downtown than it is on Hughes for a nighttime parade. We've had that through downtown traditionally. We've gone over the railroad in the past. We realized that's a problem. We would suggest that you turn down Front Street, come back up Sullivan. You can start and end at the skate park. And give us a tradition back in downtown. We've put a lot of effort into Christmas there, and we feel like that routing would work if you went from Mill Church, front Sullivan, Mill, back to skate park. Wouldn't take any longer, wouldn't take any more people to run it. So we would urge you to reconsider the routing that you have now and bring it back downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please come forward, state your name and your district.
Good evening, Paul and council members. I wish I had more than three minutes because I could talk for three months. But I'm not going to do that because nobody wants to hear anybody prattle them. First of all, I would like to say, I would like to ask Renee, do you know how to spell confidentiality? Because you certainly don't display that, that you understand that. And I also want to say, and I will direct Paul Finley directly to his eyeballs, because we have had a relationship in the past many years, and he's not, I don't think he'll deny it. But Paul, would I have a problem with saying anything to you? Do I tell you all good things or all bad things? I mean, I pretty much tell you just whatever's on my mind, right? So I want everybody in this room to know that if I send you an email, you don't have to forward it to Paul Finley, BCC it to him, because I'll tell him to his face. But every email that I send from now on, Paul inbox is going to be full, hon, because I am tired of getting emails at 10 o'clock on Saturday night from the attorney that says, "The Open Record Act requires that a response to your request be provided within a reasonable time. My office consistently provides responses within 30 days of a request." Well, that's questionable, but your office is the legal office. And Ms. Thomas, Ms. Lisa Thomas, when my original records request was sent, it was sent on September the 18th. No one was more shocked than Angela Davis Gary when I got a response from Lisa Ritz on September the 19th giving me an answer. It was not a correct answer. It did not contain any information that was worth anything. I've been here long enough to know, to check the minutes and the agendas. And so, no, sir, don't. And by the way, I am Mrs. MRS Gary to you always, or Mrs. Angela, don't insult me anymore. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please state your name and district. Yes, ma'am. Come on up.
Hey, I'm Brandy Booth, and I come as a representative of Shops of Historic Downtown Madison. I'm one of the business owners down there. You have to forgive me. I thought I was just coming to support the other speakers, and they're like, no, you should be the talker, so. So I first want to thank the city for the events, the different organizations that have brought different events, at least for me speaking, over the past two years that we've had a store in downtown Madison. So we are very, very thankful for that. One commonality, though, that we have seen over the past two years with the wonderful events is that we have so many new people coming into Madison. And over and over, they'll say, "We had no idea there was even a downtown, but it was because of the event that was hosted that had brought them downtown." And so with that, you know, downtown Madison is the heart of the city. And so the history, where the beginning was. And so with so many new people coming in, we want them to be able to know that there is a downtown. And I know that all of you have seen over the past year, two years plus, the reverberation of downtown. There's been so much more being added. We're thrilled that we're finishing our store. Other stores are being, there's so much happening. And with that, we truly believe that bringing the Christmas parade back at least close to downtown is going to be able to bring more eyes downtown. And with the parade, it's really twofold. It's wonderful that the city hosts this parade just to give back to the citizens, just the enjoyment, the family activities to come out. But also, the second part is the intentional aspect of bringing them to a shopping district to where hopefully they'll stay and they'll spend the day. They'll eat lunch. They'll come out and they'll shop. They'll do Christmas shopping. And then that especially downtown gives the shops more revenue, going back more sales tax dollars going back to the city, but also the opportunity for us to be able to have more, to be able to build up downtown a whole lot more. So just building off of what Walt said, I really see the benefits truly of the city to consider bringing the parade downtown for so much. So anyway, thank y'all so much for your consideration.
And Ms. Booth, are you here representing a number of people in the audience? Do you all want to just raise your hands if you're here for the downtown group? Okay.
Yeah, and there's about that many that wanted to come tonight, the business owners, but could not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll address that when I have to.
Sure, sure. Thanks, Renee.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the council?
Jennifer Coe, Ashley State, District Five, Council President. I will be talking about baseball tonight. Planning Resolution 2023-311R authorizing almost 200K for architects to plan more suites, I guess not seating, for Toyota Field, more for visitors locker room. Okay, we could solve the locker room problem by designating that what we already have is unisex. At the work session on Tuesday, there were line items under CIP projects now for Toyota Field to the tune of 17.5 million. So the taxpayer is now funding more expansion for a clubhouse and suites through the issuance of bonds again. And Ms. Spears and Mr. Powell clarified it would be about 11 million would be for bonds. Okay. So this is not a priority for most taxpayers. Street lighting, striping the lanes on Madison Boulevard would go a long way. With some reflectors on pavement for public safety should be our highest priority, especially since the addition of more infrastructure for Toyota Field will not pay for itself. An average of 4,900 attendees per game is nowhere near the threshold of like 7,000. So how will we justify the need for this expansion? If you Google the trash pandas, you can see that your average attendance for the three-year average is about 5,100 fans per home game. So is it ethical, really, to ask the taxpayers to take out bonds to finance this project? And also, does the city of Madison have building codes? How about codes regarding the encroachment onto the city cemetery? You have contractors from Landmark pouring concrete slabs six feet away from the property line of the cemetery. Is there not an easement there? And this landmark, you know, it's not really an attractive. I personally, it's just not really respectful. This development is just like screams no respect. It's too opportunistic, and it feels like it's taking advantage. There are people, this is what I've heard, that someone who was visiting a grave was literally thrown out. Some of the developers came on a golf cart and bothered someone because they were there at this grave. They had relatives buried there, and they were asked to leave. I'm not sure what all happened. Maybe y'all can look into that. But this development at the cemetery.
Thank you, Ms. Mayer. You're out of time. Thank you.
Hi, Marjorie Daly, Karen's District. So I have a couple of things to talk about. Number one is fire safety. And I'm really disappointed to find out that the shanty shacks done by Landmark over here have no fire-resistant paint, no fire retardant paint on the egresses or hallways, no sprinklers or no firewalls. You know, this is really unsafe. Fire is a very scary thing. We just saw the building go up on Reserve and Enterprise, I think it was. Now, those buildings were older, but we still haven't updated our code. I mean, simple paint on the egresses and the hallways would make a big difference on getting people out should this go on fire. There are hardly any setbacks in between those buildings, and the ones that are multiple-level, multi-dwellings have no fire safety. Our fire codes are for one-family houses. We never updated it when somebody decided we needed multi-level, multi-dwellings. That's one subject. I really would like to see some fire codes put in, at least paint. It's not that expensive. Now, the stadium, 235, the Resolution 235. You keep saying it's mandatory we update the stadium. This is not the truth. This is a big lie. It's malingering. Several older AA stadiums are not updating. We don't have to update. Our stadium is brand-new, and it's a farce created by this council that it's mandatory. They are requesting it. It is not mandatory. We are not MLB, okay? We want to add on this new visitors locker room and private suites on top. Very few people get to go to party and fundraise in those private suites. Those are not for the general public, yet the general taxpayers are footing the bill, okay? In October or November, we gave 37 million for ramps. That was in the first quarter of our budget. Now, this mid-budget, we're given 6 million, and then there's another 11.5 million, which is 54.5 million in just the first two quarters of our budget. I mean, I think we have to start doing things for the rest of the city and not just town Madison. And these private suites, I mean, basically, they're party places. And I don't see that we're getting deliverables from the stadium like you guys claim. Then we have Hexagon. Now, you had to know that it wasn't going to be used for fire and safety because the response time was never there for fire trucks. And yet you did another bold-faced lie telling us that was going to be for fire and safety. Now it's for private sports, pickleball. We got a gym over there. We're going to have softball, so a few people will be able to use it. As far as the stadium goes, the majority of our population can't afford.
You're out of time.
Thank you.
Does anyone else who'd like to address the council, please come forward. State your name and district.
Hi, I'm Jeff Johnson. I live on Whisperwood Lane. I think that's District Four. But I was wanting to ask about the situation over on Waltryanna, right outside the neighborhood there, between Mill Road and Brown's Ferry Road. About a week ago, they started a construction project on there. And I thought that about two or three meetings ago, y'all approved in anticipation of widening Waltryanna to four lanes, the stumbling block with that bridge over that creek there was only two lanes wide right now. You know, we're going to, I think y'all approved expanding that to four lanes, which sounds like a proactive thing to do in anticipation of sometime at some unspecified future point making the whole thing four lanes. But it looks, but now they're over there just repaving that. And I was just wondering if y'all are going to rebuild that bridge in about six months? Why is somebody over there repaving, putting down a nice new street only for it to be abused by a bunch of heavy cranes and cement mixers and stuff to fix that bridge? Or I just was wondering if somebody could give a little status of what actually is going on over there, either the mayor or some of the councilmen or something, or some of those road department people that always seem to know what's going on. But anyway, if y'all could just maybe hit on that before the end of the meeting, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Seeing none, we will close public comments and move to the consent agenda and finance committee report.
We went over the consent. Thank you. Only get jumped on over that. We went over the consent agenda prior to the meeting, and everything was in order. I do want to point out that there was a donation to the Senior Citizens Center from L. Tucker for $30. And everything is in order. Major approve.
Second. Motion in second. Any discussion? Ready for vote. Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Next, we'll have presentations and reports, starting with Mayor Finley.
All right, and I'll start with addressing the downtown area, which we love our downtown area, as you guys know. I don't know how it was ever mentioned that it was going to go downtown again last year, as you guys know. Although the parade was rained out, it was going to be on Hughes Road. That comes directly from a meeting with our recreation director, our chief of police, and our fire chief. And it simply is that we do not feel right now that that is the safest place to have a parade. We also take into account that there's an activity on the weekend before the parade, December 2nd, which is Waffle Fest, which brings a lot of people down there, which we're thrilled about, and an activity on the following weekend, which is the chicken toss that the Anderson brothers do. So it's not as if we're not trying to take care of downtown. What we are trying to do is have the safest route that we possibly can for the parade that's at night. And in listening to both police, fire, and recreation, Hughes Road is where we feel like the safest place is. It'll start up at Plaza where it's lit well, where we can have a long runway to get everybody in place. It'll end at the skate park, which again is a place where we can safely get everybody off the road. It takes basically one road with some of the crossroads that in turn make it safer. And so we hear you loud and clear. We are having the parade when it comes to the street festival. It's during the morning hours. We know the trains are going to be going slow. So, you know, while I hear you guys loud and clear, and it's not a decision that we take lightly. It is one that we absolutely defer to safety first, and that's where it will be. And with that said, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'm sorry. Mr. Johnson, that is going to be paved right now. It was already planned to be paved. The bridge, if it was redone, would be done. It wouldn't be done anytime soon. And so when we get done with the part that we're repaving now on the north side of the railroad tracks, we'll go all the way down towards Madison Boulevard and repave down between Madison Madison Bull- uh, on Sullivan Street, between Madison Boulevard, um, and where the five, um, I'm trying to think how far up it comes. Jeff, um, yeah, Spinrin, up to Spinrin, and we'll, we'll do that part too. So it is being repaved, the, but not anytime soon. Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. District One.
Uh, yes, ma'am. I have first, uh, for your consideration and approval, resolution twenty twenty-three dash two eighty dash R. Uh, this is something we've talked about before. It's approving the staff plan for our new facilities in Brown's Department. Uh, HR committee, uh, met and recommends approval, and then we also discussed it at the work session, and with that, I move to approve.
Second. Motion and a second, any discussion on the staffing plan or questions? Seeing none, we're ready for a vote.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Oh, aye, sorry.
Council President Bartlett?
Somebody was whispering over there.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
And the motion passes.
Okay, and I just have one other thing. Um, with council and mayor, we want to extend our congratulations to Judy Riles. She was the president of the Convention and Visitors Bureau and worked for them for forty-five years. Uh, she retires this week. We have a card going off to her. The mayor has presented her with a city coin, and just wanted to say publicly thank you to her for her many years of service in promoting the city of Madison and our surrounding area, and that's all I have.
Thank you. District Two.
Um, yes. Um, first, I would like to, um, to discuss the, um, annual operating budget. We have, um...
Let's move to approve first. Right? Don't we move to approve before we can discuss it?
Yes, I need to move to approve.
Second. Okay, that's fine. It's okay for her to introduce.
Okay.
Before you know what you're moving to.
So, after our work session, um, I met with the mayor, and we went through his new proposed, well, first of all, he went through and he scrubbed the budget, and, um, then we met and walked through it line item by line item, and he showed me exactly where everything was, and what we have done is the one point five million dollars which was proposed for the suites at Toyota Field has been taken out of this budget at this point. We have, um, one point five million dollars that was put back into fire safety, and through other budget adjustments, we were able to come up with one point five million dollars for the community center. And Mayor, was there anything that you wanted to make sure I highlighted?
If I can go through real quickly, yes. So what, uh, council asked that we immediately do is take one point five million dollars that was, uh, in for the community center, and we moved it into a new line item called New Fire Station, for the fire station that we will put in the town Madison Zert Road area when we find the right property and eventually get the, the budgeting for that. What council then asked us to do is find the money that we can in turn put back into the community center. So we did it with several things. I'll kind of go through them real quickly. First, in between the time that we, um, had and a couple, and the day later, we found out what our actual insurance numbers will be rather than what they are proposed. They were proposed at seven percent. The good news is we most likely will only have about a three and a half percent increase, so we were able to immediately take out of the budget about four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Uh, secondly, we did a budget scrub. There were seven departments that had numbers in twice, of which that was three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Lastly, um, it, there was the building and grounds changes. First, we subtracted a hundred thousand dollars from consulting, two hundred and one thousand dollars from salaries, and then we, uh, added fifty-two thousand in for City Hall Security. So, um, um, so that net is two hundred and forty-nine thousand. So of the one point five, we found a million dollars, a little over a million dollars that we're able to immediately put back in. Then two of the Fund Thirty-eight pieces, wayfinding and talking with Mary Beth, and one of the things that the historic downtown folks were looking for and that we want to keep in there is phase one of the wayfinding, which is directly correlated with getting people to know more about historic downtown Madison. And so you can't just do it for that, you have to bring them in from different places. But that number, um, where it was in it, the budget at seven hundred and fifty thousand, we've now brought that back down to three hundred thousand, so that was another four hundred and fifty thousand. And then secondly, for the fire station four at Celtic, we had in half a million dollars. We feel confident that we can get done what needs to be done to temporarily keep them safe at two hundred and fifty thousand, and so we took that out, which was another seven hundred thousand dollars between the two of those. So we actually found about one point seven million dollars of that, and that's how we got to that number.
Thank you. And also, I wanted to point out that the six million dollars that is proposed for the renovations of the first story of the, um, visitors', um, locker room at Toyota Field is out of general fund. There's not a bond that is being taken out for that six million dollars.
Correct. And while I hear the opinion that it had, doesn't have to be done, and, um, we also have an opinion from Mary Beth, who has worked directly with Major League Baseball to at least get it down to that piece, that it is needed to be compliant to meet Major League Baseball standards, and again, there's new, some new folks in here. Um, a year and a half ago, maybe two, Major League Baseball purchased minor league baseball, and in doing so, put new parameters on the requirements that we had in all facets of the stadium, and that's why we're looking at that. So you are correct, it would be paid, um, if council were to support that out of general fund, which on the agenda tonight is the ability to get the drawings done, which in turn helps you understand is that a real number, at which point council would yet vote positively or negatively to go forward.
Correct. Thank you. And that was all. Did anybody else have any questions?
Any questions for Finance Committee on the budget?
I still have some concerns.
We already did ha- we already did that.
Okay.
I think he's just saying we do have a motion and a second. He was just making sure that was done, and so whatever, yeah.
Go ahead, Karen.
Okay, yeah, well, anybody that was able to watch the work session, you understand that there was a lot of discussion that went on in that. There was a lot of people that had very good questions concerning how we are spending our money. Um, I feel that it's the people, it's the taxpayers' money, and I really do look at it that way. Um, I do still have concerns, I do appreciate the changes that happen made, um, and I appreciate some of the things that are in the budget, the fact that they're, they are, um, putting money towards new, new police cars and that sort of thing, there are some religious things in here. But I do have concerns. Um, one of them is that we are going to be doing this study for the employee wages, and then I never saw where we were including that, how we're going to pay for that in the future, assuming that this study goes through. So can somebody say how that's being paid for?
Sure. I think to remind folks that weren't here last time, let me start by what we are doing for the employees right now, which for the seventh straight year is they will receive, if, if council, again, if you support this, um, a step increase, which is a three percent increase. Um, for the seventh straight year, they will not pay the increase in their insurance. So where we talk about the fact that it budgeted for a seven percent increase, it was only three and a half percent, but the city is paying for all our employees who have insurance for that three and a half percent increase. For the third year in a row, um, we, we're, um, this budget has a cola in it. One year it was two point five, last year it was three percent, and this is three percent again. So all of that will catch us up some. It won't catch us up with everything, and I think what I heard from council, it was agreed upon that it's going to take at least six months to get to that point of getting this back, and so at mid-year, we would have the ability to discuss the adjustments that need to be made if you choose to make adjustments.
And a big part of the, uh, HR study is not necessarily pay. It has to do with other things as well, uh, PTO, part, uh, time off, uh, things like that, tuition reimbursement. So it's not just financially based, it's the whole development of the employee.
Yeah, it's a great point, more, because one of the things we are looking at right now, Karen, um, anybody, I just had to say it's Karen, but anybody, is, um, right now that's, we have a use it or lose it piece in place. As a matter of fact, we had several employees in this last couple of weeks that have taken days off because if they don't, they're going to lose it. Well, one of the things you do is you lose production, but you also, the, why wouldn't you if you're an employee? One of the things we're looking at to give our employees is the ability for you to take that in more of a payment. You know, you can keep working, and if you have a, over and above a certain number, you would get a check instead of just taking it. It's a net, net neutral to the city, it's a benefit to the employees, and hopefully would help with additional production. So there's those types of things that we're also looking at to make sure, and it is a big package, but that would be brought to us somewhere in the four to six months range, and at mid-years where we'll look to make the changes.
Okay, then we also have a comprehensive study. We spent three hundred thousand dollars for it. Um, we're still waiting for the results. It was supposed to be last summer, then it got pushed to the winter time, and now we're into this summer. When can we expect the answers to that? Because I'm hoping that they come forth with a lot of ways that we should be spending the money for the taxpayer benefits to support the, the needs of this community, and I'm wondering when we're going to get that, and have we satisfied money? Are we going to have to wait till midterm again? Or how are we going to address those issues?
Mary Beth, you could probably give us an idea of when the actual, um, study, you expect that back.
I had a call with a consulting firm on Friday. Um, they have experienced some significant staff losses in their firm, and that is basically the reason for them not meeting the deadlines that they had identified. Um, so we've asked them to reset, give us a new schedule that they can meet, given, um, their staffing challenges. I expect that I'll have that scheduled within a couple of weeks. Um, where we are in terms of the overall project is in the drafting of chapter phases, so the advisory committee had already, um, come to an agreement on future build-out population and had already come to an agreement on the transportation model, so all of that, uh, input had already been culminated. It was a matter of the consultant then putting those chapters together. And, um, they're going to start releasing those chapters over to us in the next thirty days, I would say, and then we will reengage with our advisory committee, uh, and then go into public meetings. Obviously, we're going to be moving into the holiday time, which makes it a little bit challenging. Practically speaking, I would say, you know, we're going to be looking at the end of next spring, but I don't have that schedule yet. One of the outputs from the project is an implementation, recommended implementation action, so, um, road improvements that come out of the traffic modeling, um, items to support parks, items to support public safety. And so those are the items that I think you're alluding to, right, in terms of what might the priorities be to support the population growth that's anticipated. So a lot of that, I think you already know, just based upon the comments that the public safety folks have made or parks have made, you know, as part of capital improvement discussions, those will just get formalized in the plan. There may be some other recommendations, because of course, the plan is looking out to twenty forty-five, and so that's looking further down the road. But that's kind of our timeframe right now. I, I'm thinking is the end of spring where we'd be going into, um, I'll say, formal public meetings on the plan with the planning commission, but I'll have a better sense of that in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Well, I can understand their staffing issues, but they've been working for some time. Is there any parts of it? I mean, numbers could be getting old by this point if it was done.
No, I mean, I, I don't think the numbers would be getting old. Uh, I mean, that's a great question. Um, in terms of the way the, the whole planning process works, right, we're looking at what we think build-out will be, um, based upon available land that's in the city, keeping in mind that we have a growth policy in place. We had, um, some very detailed conversations with our Planning Advisory Commission about that, right? And, you know, does the city, does the advisory committee think that additional annexation should be supported separate from the growth policy, et cetera? So we built all of that in, and I think the growth policy's been very effective in terms of stemming growth, right? So we've not experienced any development that we were not anticipating, and we certainly don't foresee that, um, happening. So I'm not really worried about that. Um, we've, they have run traffic modeling, um, and, uh, one might say, well, the traffic numbers get a little outdated, um, but our, every, the regions experience, um, that while traffic levels are coming back, um, in some areas they're not at pre-COVID levels because some people are still choosing to work from home, making different choices. But again, uh, when you're doing a model, you can certainly extrapolate. The model is also run looking at that future growth, so I think that we can capture that with, um, the tools that we have with our consultants. So I'm, I'm not worried at all that we're going to have a document that's not going to be relevant to what's happening in, say, first or second quarter of twenty twenty-four.
Okay. So I guess, you know, we're getting all the information at once. If we were getting it bits and pieces, perhaps we could do better planning for the people.
Well, I think that, um, having worked on these documents for a while in different capacities, um, it works well with our planning advisory committee, who is immersed in it, um, but when you're dealing with, um, the type of topics we are, it's helpful if you can provide a little bit more of a comprehensive picture to everyone, because it just begs the question, if you're giving them this, or what about this? And we may have figured out this other piece, but, um, so it's a little bit more effective communication if we're giving them a little bit more at one time. It really is.
All right. Thank you for that, Karen. I appreciate that. Um, also, as others have, have stated, I have a concern with the safety and the fact that the fire station, which I also thought was going to be put in over at the Hexagon building, isn't, and now we don't have a full fund. I love that we now have, you know, two point two-five now put into it, but it is going to cost, what, close to four million, and it concerns me that we do not have that currently in this budget, because I've been asking for this, I think, every year since I was elected. This is something that we need in the city, and I'm concerned that it's still not in this budget. We're getting closer, but it's not there, and then we're also turning around and putting another two point four million into the Hexagon. Like, well, okay, that's six million over there. I just wonder how we are spending the money. These are my personal concerns, um, because I feel that we are elected to provide services to the, to the citizens. That's our number one thing with safety being the biggest issue, so that's how I stand.
Okay. Are there any other questions for finance on the budget?
I got a quick comment. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank Roger Bellamy and, uh, mayor's office for getting the budget too. Finance committee, finance committee, uh, going through that. Um, typically, it, it, you know, gets smooth, and the mayor submits a budget, and it, you know, we look at it, and it's something that everybody agrees with, and, and we go straight through it. This time of, it still went smooth, um, and the fact that, you know, we had questions about it. Mayor worked with council through that, and, you know, it's, uh, everybody's worked through that, so, uh, thanks, thanks, Roger. That's all I've got on this.
Okay. I think we're ready for a vote on the budget.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council, Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
And the budget passes. Anything else, Connie?
Um, no, I would al- well, yes, I would also like to thank Judy Riles for her hard work she's done for our region and wish her the best. And that's all.
Okay. And thank you, Connie, for all the work that you've done on the budget. And Teddy?
So I'm going to take a little bit of time. Obviously, um, got some folks from downtown that, that came to see me, and I appreciate it. Um, and I want to thank both chiefs for what they do. They do, they do a really tough job, you know, keeping our city safe. Um, I think Parks and Recs for doing what they do. And I want to thank Mary Beth for, you know, spending, she's spent a lot of time, a lot of effort, and we've spent a lot of money downtown, uh, to have events down there. Um, and let everybody know that I disagree with the fact that we're not having the parade downtown. I spoke about it last year, the year before, I'll speak about it this year, I'll speak about it next year, and the next year, and eventually I'll become a citizen and speak about it. So for full disclosure, I'm going to let everybody know, I live downtown. Um, so that's, that's, I live down there. I'm a resident. So now I'm speaking from, from a resident standpoint, because I can't, I can't go there and use that mic, but I'm going to use this one for a moment. Some of the reason that we moved downtown was for the parade, it was for the, to hear the bells, you know, at the church. It was for the, not just, we used to have, you know, both high school parades down there. We had, um, street fest down there, we'd always have the Christmas parade down there, We'd always have the Christmas parade down there. And some of my kids' greatest memories is growing up to see that. A lot of kids' greatest memories are growing up, are growing up to see that. So, there's a couple of things I want to talk about now away from the personal standpoint and more from the business standpoint. You know, there's two things that come to mind, community and economic development. We spent a lot of money downtown as a council to redo roads and, and, you know, put up different things that look really nice. And in return, we got something back, and it's from, from the people sitting out here. If you own a business or you own a building that houses a business that started after we paved those roads, raise your hand. All right? That's, that's just the businesses. You've got people downtown that are investing in the houses. Drive down there, you know, there's, there's, you know, redoing of houses, there's new houses going up, ton of stuff going on. And all that's because of the money that we've put in. So, now, we're saying, we appreciate putting the money in, thank you guys for doing what you're doing, you know, but we're not going to do this stuff down there in town anymore. How fair is it on the other side if they said, you know what? Thanks for putting those roads in, we appreciate it. We don't want to do the chicken toss. We don't want to do fixing up our buildings. We don't want to put up Christmas lights. We don't want to put on the Christmas card lane. We don't want to put on all those things. What if they said that? That's unfair. So, that's what I'm speaking about there. That's the, the economic development part of it. The other thing is the community part of it. Madison continues to grow, will continue to grow. We're going to become a larger city. There's nothing we can really do to stop that. I mean, the developers here, we've got a great city, they know it, they're going to spend money here because it makes sense. If we don't do small things, if we don't have Christmas parades downtown, or, you know, we also used to have Halloween downtown, if we take those things away, we become a city. We become a large city. And I don't know anybody in here that would raise their hand and go, you know what? I moved here because I want Madison to be a larger city. No one here would say that. If, if there's anybody here that moved here so Madison can grow to be a larger city, raise your hand, up here or out there. You're not seeing it. So, that's, I mean, I respect, again, I respect the safety of the two police chiefs. I respect the hard work of the mayor's office. I know it's a difficult thing to do. I, I know it's hard. But, you know, we keep the city safe, and we have fun, and we've always worked hard. And I think if we work hard and we've worked with downtown, if we ask the people downtown, I guarantee you they'd be willing to help out. I'll raise my hand and tell you I would. That's all I've got.
Can I ask a question? Could a compromise be that we have the parade in the afternoon?
Well, I mean, I think the part, I think, I think part of it is, you know, if you have an afternoon, it gets dark, when, when we have that, it's going to get dark at four thirty, right? So, so, the afternoon, it's going, the concern is it being dark.
Right. So, could we have it at, like, two o'clock?
Well, I mean, I don't, again, I don't think it makes sense. The whole point is to have that, that feeling of, of, of the Christmas parade. The one thing that used to be a big issue was going across the railroad tracks. And I'll, I'll tell everybody here, I can, that is unsafe. We just absolutely don't need to do that because I can tell you, when I've been on the Christmas parades, I'm as close as here to right there from a kid from a fire truck. It's just unsafe, and we don't need to do that. The turns are wide, the, the most difficult turn coming downtown is turning on the Church Street and turning off of front back on to Sullivan. And, you know, I know that it was mentioned that we, we tried to leave from the skate park and go around and do that. What happens there is that backs up and you can't do that. The easiest way to do that, that I would propose, is you can start at the skate park, go back around like you're doing and go all the way up to Old Madison Pike, turn right and go back towards the library to let everybody unload. That, that works. It's worked before. And, you know, I, I've only been here twenty years, well, eighteen years, and we've always had a parade. And it's, it's been downtown except for the last three years, I believe.
Well, I'm just wondering if we have it at, like, three o'clock, and it's starting to get dark at four o'clock, we'll be all finished with the parade, then they can have the nighttime events down there, and the parade will be over. I'm, I'm just wondering if that's not a compromise we can look at?
You know, if you guys want to talk about it later, that's fine, but that's, you know, right now, that's not something that has been even proposed to us, so.
But, I don't think we were asked. We were, we were told. I was told last meeting, and I didn't even get to tell anybody before they were calling me. I was told twice. So, I think a heads up would have been nice. And I, I agree with.
Wait, when you say heads up, and, and I hear you, and it was on Hughes Road last year. We didn't change it to downtown. Someone else did.
Did I ask about it last year?
Yes.
Did I ask about it the year before?
Every year.
Am I going to ask about it next year?
You said you were.
I will.
Whether you're a city councilman or a citizen.
Correct.
I think it's coming.
You, you can guarantee it.
I know.
I would, I'd love to see if there's some kind of compromise, if the mayor, mayor's office, myself included, if we can work together with some of the folks downtown, business owners and rel, you know, residents, I'm all for it. I'll let you, let me know if you want to do that or not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. And District Four is not here. I'm going to go ahead and go with Resolution Number 2023-317-R, authorizing archiving and streaming of our September nineteenth work session.
Move to approve.
Okay. Okay. Robleski has the motion, and I think Spears had the second. She was the fastest out of the gate. Any discussion? Ready for a vote.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
And the motion passes. District Six.
All right. First, I will start with the Police Advisory Committee. They are meeting tomorrow night at the library. The topic is meet the leaders, the police chief, fire chief that will be there. If anybody's got any questions about how public safety works in the city, tomorrow night's your chance. Oh, the second thing I want to talk about is the Madison Street Festival, which is happening downtown, which brings all the, oh, yeah, I get to have all that good business there. And we're really excited this year. We have, we have three hundreds, let me get it right, we have three hundred businesses, vendors and organizations that'll be on board to make this a happening place. Our sponsorship has been phenomenal this year. We have so many people, so many community businesses that are contributing this year, and it's wonderful, and thank you. We've been working closely with the police department, especially Captain Allen and Captain, Sergeant Dixon, to, to make sure that all the safety is in place for that too. It is a morning thing, so we don't have the same problems, but it's wonderful that we can bring people downtown. I think it is very important. So, the parade starts at nine o'clock, and then the mayor will be giving a welcome to the festival, starting at ten, was it? Was that at ten?
I don't know exactly. I think it's usually a little bit after the parade's done. I don't know if there's an actual time for it.
Okay. But, there's actually performances going on there. It's more than just the mayor talking tomorrow on that. And there's so many people that are involved. They've got the, Bob Jones and the James Clemens children, students, doing things. They've got photography going on. There are just so many ways this year that they are really involving the whole community and the Madison Arts. Yes, that's their chief. So, it's just exciting. It's exciting. I, I don't think we need signs to get thirty-five thousand people to find where this great event is. I think it just draws in because it is an awesome event, so community oriented, and I'm really excited. Again, and that is October seventh. It's always the first Saturday of the year. And I do believe that's all I have in business right now.
Thank you, District Seven.
No new business tonight.
All right. Next, we're going to move to Board and Committee appointments, and we had one item walk on, and I think that one's yours, John.
Yes, ma'am. I would like to nominate John Campbell to the Recreation Advisory Board for the open position we have.
Okay. And any other nominations? Seeing none, we will nominate and appoint John Campbell by acclamation. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to move now to public hearings. During the public hearings, each member of the public will be allowed five minutes to speak, also stating their name and district that they live in, after the property owners get to speak. And we will begin with Item A.
Before you have proposed ordinance Number 2023-243, and this is to zone a property to R1A, which is a low-density residential zoning. You can see the area demarcated on that exhibit. This is a property that's proposed for annexation, and you have that annexation later in your agenda. This property is about one acre, one point zero seven acres. It meets our growth policy. It was considered by the planning commission. They're recommending it as a staff. There were no comments against this item when it went to the planning commission, and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Motion, second half.
This is the public hearing.
Wait a minute. Public hearing. Yes.
My bad, my bad.
All right. So, we're going to open up public hearing. Do we have property owners here?
I do not believe so.
Okay. So, we're going to open public hearing. Are there any members of the public who would like to address this particular zoning? Seeing none, we'll close public hearings now.
Move to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see. I'm sorry. I did not see you stand behind Mary Beth. I'm so sorry. Public hearing is reopened because I couldn't.
All right. So, we're going to, you know, zone in this one acre of land or whatever of pile and work green. And I understand that that might be very, very beneficial, but in the same point, and I think this is where the plant, the budgeting and the planning for, like I said, a planning zoning for a plan, the best considerations for the city and areas which should have zoning adjustments. Okay, so, you guys can make, mind make a zoning adjustment and add this into the city. All right. At the, at the work session last week, Mayor, Mayor Finley commented about how it's trouble getting paving companies here to get the sidewalks paved that they're looking to ramp up, and he's talked about a two hundred fifty thousand dollar increase and having a budget of this much for sidewalks and things. And there are some that I know are already planned that we had on the, the agenda, but, in the past, but in the same portion, planning and zoning, you know, they're looking way out to two thousand twenty-five, and y'all recognize that, yes, our city is growing. People can't safely walk along streets. They have to have sidewalks, and people want a walking community. And there's, and I spoke in, you know, several meetings ago about, you know, having a sidewalk continue up along Eastview. And, you know, at least focusing on some of these major areas every year and not be throwing so much money into a lot of other things, and, and, and that's, I'm talking about the planning and zoning. And I understand that this might be a very good thing to add into the city, but in the meantime, we're not spending enough money on getting sidewalks, and, and, and we've been behind for years and years and years, and somehow, that doesn't seem to be a focus. And all of a sudden, you know, in, in just this whole budgeting process, they found all this extra money, but did any of it go into paving and, you know, for sidewalks? And, and to get paving companies here, I, I just don't understand that. That's a, a man, a matter of planning ahead of time, having these sidewalks planned out and actually implementing it. And for, at, at one previous council meeting, it was talked about, oh, well, we wanted to get this sidewalk in this area since two thousand sixteen, and it's like, this shouldn't be that complicated. I, you know, like you say, our city is growing, we know what streets are there, we know where people want to walk, we should go ahead and focus on some of that. So, I, I, I appreciate the time and that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Is there anyone else who wants to address this rezoning? Now, public hearings are closed. We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions for Mayor Beth?
And just to clarify, this is an application that's submitted by the private property owner. This is not something that the city initiated.
And it's an opportunity for increased property taxes.
Yes, it is. And it's an existing home that's already using city roads and so forth.
Yeah, if I can. So, this is at no cost to the city for this home coming in. Ms. Mayor, from the sidewalks and streets standpoint, I think our budget reflected actually an increase in street paving this year above and beyond what we've done in the past for the collector's. For the sidewalks, I will say, over the past seven or eight years, we have focused extremely hard on sidewalks, and you can now actually get, yes, you can. You can get from literally Hughes Road to County Line, you may have to go through a few subdivisions on a sidewalk, and you have to, yes, cross the street. But, at the same time, we have focused that in a lot of key areas. And there are specific areas where now actually getting to engineering, it's like solving a differential equation to figure out how to get the sidewalk in there because the cost is so high. And we've taken a lot of those. Ma'am, I'll let you talk. You did use all your five minutes.
The public hearing is closed. The audience needs to be quiet. Councilmember Seifert has the floor.
So, we have very much put the sidewalks in there, and we focused on it. We've actually brought a lot of those in-house to save money. From the standpoint of planning and those things ahead of time, in the COVID environment and even now, it is very, very hard in that industry to find people to work, and that is just a reality. It is what it is. A lot of people still do not want to come to work in that industry, and that is just a fact. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? I think we're ready for a vote. I think, who had the motion?
I, I have the motion.
And Connie had the second.
Mm-hmm. Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you, Mary Beth. Now, the next two resolutions deal with weed assessment, with assessment of weed liens on the following properties. First one is 180 Dusty Trail, and the second one that we'll take up is on eighty-one thirty-five Old Madison Pike. We've been presented with itemized reports showing the cost of removing weed nuisances from these properties. These reports have been previously sent to the owners of the lots. We're now going to have a public hearing on these matters, and we're going to begin with 180 Dusty Trail. Is, is there an owner for that property here who wishes to address the council? Do we see? Okay. So, we don't have anyone else. Is there anyone else who would like to address this weed lien? The owner has not.
Margie Daly, Karen's district. Okay. So, I'm curious about this because two weeks ago, this owner was here. She told us that the lawyer sent the things to her property instead of, because she doesn't live, it's, there's no home there, instead of to her home. She was supposed to send or get together with somebody here on her deed, which said she was allowed to have it natural. Now, these weed liens, we're putting them on people. Now, all summer long, Portal was never, ever mowed. That was John Blue's property. Plaza Drive, never, ever mowed. I had to complain and complain till finally, I think last week, they finally mowed Plaza. But, you give a citizen that was here two weeks ago, and here you're going to put a lien on their property two weeks later. You didn't give this woman any time to straighten out whatever had to be straightened out. According to her, the, the deed says that the property was supposed to be left natural. Now, the city went in and didn't look at the deed and mowed her property. Okay? So, I, I don't see that two weeks is enough time to straighten it out, and I think it would rush into judgment on this particular property because she said she would come back, and I have no idea, since the attorney didn't send it to the correct address in the first place, but she got here two weeks ago, why this hasn't been, you know, given a little bit of time, more than two weeks. If we will give the developers all summer long without mowing their weeds, but yet one, a citizen, you're going to, in two weeks, put a lien on her property. I mean, I just don't think it's fair. I think, you know, let's have a little bit more time for this woman. I don't know why she's not here. We spoke with her after the meeting. She said that her deed states it can be left natural. Now, I know Plaza Drive doesn't have a deed to leave it natural, nor does Portal, but that was well, mowed only once, just a week or two ago. No matter how many complaints you get on it, they just are allowed to get away with it. But what it's a single, uh, a- and this woman is, um, her husband just passed away. She's a widower. So, I mean, this is a sad thing that you're doing here. You're gonna put a lien on their property. And you didn't even give it two weeks. I mean, paperwork had to be get, uh, done from the courthouse because apparently it's supposedly on her deed. Now, I don't know if the lawyer talked to her, but last two weeks ago, he was babbling on that he sent it to the right address. But he did not send it to the right address, the notice. I see the notice for this was in that Rocket or Redstone or whatever that little paper is, that's where the notice went in. But did the property owner know that there was a public hearing tonight? And with that, uh, I'll yield my time at 1:55. Thank you very much.
Is there any, Mr. Kilgore, sit, sit down for just a moment. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to address this item on the public hearing? Seeing none, we will close public hearings. Now, Mr. Kilgore, you can be up there, you can stay right there. What is your response, if any?
I just wanted to address, uh, two things, misinformation. I think the word deed was used about seven times. Uh, there was no question over a deed. The lady had come in and said that she'd had a court order that indicated that she could keep her property in that manner. Uh, we did in fact continue. I did in fact reach out directly to her to look at that order. And the order does not say that. It was an order from 2013. We went over it and in fact, the court would not have that authority in order to, uh, make that kind of a proclamation anyway. Uh, and also, this was four weeks ago. This was not last council, it was the council before last. And what we had done was I'd reached out to an attorney that she had mentioned to me that might be representing her, sent this information over them, gave her, uh, you know, explained that this, this, uh, order did not say what she thought that it meant. And I actually sent her, so what we did was we sent another letter telling her to come in tonight, just like she did, you know, the, uh, last meeting. And I also sent her an email yesterday, I'm sorry, last week, confirming and letting her know that we had the hearing tonight. So, we have reached out to work with her. Uh, but I just wanted to correct those few, um, misstatements that were made previously.
Thank you.
Other than that, we have gone through a statutory process to give her the proper notice, sending it to that address. Uh, we have filed a, um, uh, an ad publicly that gives constructive notice. Therefore, I believe that the city has done everything constructively to bring it to you for consideration to assess the lien.
Thank you, Mr. Kilgore. Are there any questions of him from council? We now have resolution number 2023-259-R for 180 Dusty Trail. Do we have a motion and a second?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any other discussions among council? Seeing none, we are ready for a vote. Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Next, we're gonna take up resolution number 2023-289-R regarding 8135 Old Madison Pike. Um, we have also been presented with itemized reports showing that the cost for removing the weed nuisances from the property. And the reports have been previously sent to the owners of the lots. We're now gonna hold a public hearing. Is the owner here for the property in question? We do not. Okay, then we will open public hearing. Please state your name.
My name is Angela Davis Gary. And I live at the same place I have 23 years. Lived in the city of Madison since Jesus was a baby. And the property owners at, but at this number is Old Madison Pike. The reason they haven't responded is because they're dead. One of them, they're sisters that graduated from Bob Jones High School. And they were good people. I know this because I went to high school with them. And they were the, um, kindest people ever. They were very introverted. They were the kind of people that, they came to school with their books. They went to class, they talked to each other, they were very kind, very mild-mannered, like me. And went home, did their homework. They had health problems. I believe they probably had health, I, I don't know this, but I think they probably were developing health problems even in high school. Their parents are deceased. They were two sisters living alone in a home. And they went to work at Chrysler every day, worked their whatever shift, came home, did whatever they were supposed to. My young fellow brother, Liam, that was their next door neighbor. So, my father, Big Louis Davis, we talked about my parents a lot. My dad had a lot of bad things about him. But he's worse than Greg Shaw. He cannot stand some overgrown grass. He cut those girls' grass faithfully, usually twice a week. Now, yes, the, the grass is overgrown, but it might have been a clue to whatever it's called, weed abatement or whatever your prob- the place is. But when you drove down Old Madison Pike, there's mail falling out into Old Madison Pike. Because not only did one of the sisters die in 2017, they had a brother-in-law, they have an, an heir, an older sister. And these people are not a great means. They don't, they never lived in a house like any of us have lived in. That house, they took good care of it on Old Madison Pike. But they have a sister, and she would be then, I guess, next of kin, but her husband, at the age of 53, dropped dead of a heart attack in November of 2022. Then her sister that was disabled in May of 2023, she died. Grass is not growing in May of 2023. Do any of you all think that that woman had on her mind what that grass looked like over there? Do you think she even could get up and take a shower? I sent an email. I did not copy-pap Finley on it because I didn't think it was necessary because I really thought that Dustin Riddle and Greg Shaw, being the finance chair, could handle it. And Dustin Riddle did not email me back, but that's okay. Greg Shaw called me. And I said, Greg, why can't we write it off? And you know, he's a silver-tongued devil. Please write that in the, in the minutes. I want that to be in the minutes. Greg Shaw is a silver-tongued devil. People think that's funny and I think it's funny too. Because he is. He talks all around it, but he didn't give me an answer. But that's okay. That's okay, because I'm not gonna give up on it. Rhonda and Rhonda McCary and the McCary family, unless that house sits there and falls down or is auctioned off, the people that would inherit it don't have the money to go through probate to even inherit the house. And just putting $545.25 on it. Like Shaw said, he didn't know if it was subbed out or whatever. It doesn't make any difference. You're not gonna get your $545.25. And I know that nobody's gonna do anything that I asked you to do because, you know, I'm not the favorite little girl scout in, with the city council, but that's okay too. Right is right and wrong is wrong. And those two girls probably didn't even know that a city council existed. And because they, they were just so pure. I, I just can't tell y'all how pure they were and if their family was. They didn't say boo. I mean, my dad would take vegetables over there and they were spared to answer the door. So, please reconsider that. And I have two minutes left, two seconds left. I'm done. Bye.
Thank you, Ms. Gary. Is there anyone else who would like to address 8135 Old Madison Pike?
You know, I really think that this council has to reconsider when it's individual people that you're putting liens on their homes. I mean, it doesn't seem like a lot of money, 500 and something, but if this was the case, I would have wrote a check for it. Because we have to consider the people. And stop acting, you know, like, I, I can't believe you let the developers get away with this. But yet, when it comes to individuals, you wanna find them. And, and what kind of notices were given here? To an address that people all died at? And has the air been given notice that there was a public hearing tonight? I mean, this is, I, I just don't understand how we're so quick to put liens on people's homes. I mean, we're a community. You know, we're not looking to, $500, does the city need it that much? And really, if you wouldn't go out there and find John Blue's property on Plaza Drive with a lien, you could just wait all summer long and let their weeds grow six to eight feet high, and I was complaining. But when it comes to an individual who has a death in the family or a widower like Dusty Trail, we're gonna just all vote yay. Let's put a lien on their house. So, maybe, maybe the Parkson Recreation guy can buy this house too and put it up for an Airbnb. You know, I mean, there's certain directors here that have all kinds of LLCs and homes and Airbnbs and all this kind of stuff. So, is somebody looking at this home to buy it? Or is the, uh, drainage gonna go through that part of Old Madison Pike, so we gotta put a lien on it and sell it on the courthouse steps? Can't we give the regular community people a little benefit of the doubt? Maybe reach out a little more than has been on, especially on this property when Angela tells the story of the property? I mean, you know, I, I, these people probably paid taxes for how many years? If, if she went to high school with them. And now you're just gonna slap a lien on them? Yeah, that's a long time for Madison. And they're part of what made our community grow is the people that stuck here and took care of the homes. So, I, I really, i- it's just like, it's just like spitting in our face, you know, the taxpayers by throwing these liens out there and not feeling like these people are human beings. I mean, the, the Dusty Trail, she's a widower. She just lost her husband. This one, the people are dead and there's an heir. So, I mean, you know, i- it's just sad. You're just gonna throw their house on, on, for sale on the courthouse steps. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address this issue in the public hearing? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Kilgore, do you have any response?
I would just simply say two things. First, uh, no house is going to be put, no property's gonna be put on the court steps. I heard that. That's just, just disinformation. What happens is at the end of the year, the county assessor will assess this lien along with the other taxes. Now, uh, if there's a tax lien that is associated with that, that's a possibility, but the city is not seeking any sort of action to put a property on, uh, up for sale to get $500. Uh, and all I would say is this, is there's a statutory provision that basically goes to whoever owns that property irrespective of who may have passed or who may now own it. And there's also a publication giving constructive notice as well. And finally, I would just say that I know for a fact, let me say this. We had to put a report in on all of our liens for last year. We sent it to the, uh, county assessor. Population nearly 60,000 people. We assessed three liens all last year. I think that our process works and I think that we are reaching out and trying to speak with people. And the process is working, but sometimes we can't get people here. Uh, and this ended up three times in being a lien assessed.
Okay, thank you. Um, we are now taking up resolution number 2023-289-R for 8135 Madison Pike. Is there a motion and a second?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
One question. When we send these letters, do we send them certified or registered so that somebody has to sign for them?
The statute only requires that we send it by snail mail, but we do send them certified. It also requires that we put a notice conspicuously on the property itself. And I think that we actually take some effort to actually notify, uh, people outside of that, of, above and beyond that. So, there's a lot of effort that goes in trying to identify these folks, determine who they are. But the notice is, is to the property. Not, you can have on a property and then live someplace else. We're sending the notice to their, uh, but we've done everything statutory in all these.
Thank you. Okay. Was it known that the people were deceased? That it really was abandoned and-
I, I can't speak to the tru- to, to, to anything that's been presented to the council to sign. None of that was information provided to me. But I do know that the way the process is done, if someone is deceased and there's a new owner and that new owner, uh, the way that the, the process is set up, they should receive notice either constructively through the ad or the, the mail would go there, there's a posting there. So, whoever may have taken over that property would, uh, would have received that constructive notice or the notice that was sent through the statute.
Okay, so just, just asking, so no personal contact was made with anyone in the proceedings office?
Dustin Riddle's not here tonight to, to test, you know, to let y'all know if there's any additional efforts that he took. But I do understand that he routinely does take additional efforts to try to figure out who's there at the property. I, I can't tell you tonight about this.
I'm, I'm just asking because it's, it's kind of, it's an interesting case. Any other questions?
I, I just got a quick comment. So, first of all, I mean, you know, I can, I think Angela's, uh, that's, uh, Gary's word, uh, you know, as, as it is true. Um, and if it is, that's fine. If it isn't, that's fine. It doesn't really matter. The whole reason this is in place is because about three years ago, we had houses that had weeds overgrown, rats were in the house and all kind of different issues. And not one neighbor, not two neighbors, not three neighbors, all the neighbors complained about that house. So, we put, we put this ordinance in place for that reason. And, you know, to, to try and single out each house would just be absolutely, you know, we, we just can't do it. And the other thing is, it's discriminatory. We will not do that. I mean, we're not gonna do it. I, I mean, it doesn't matter if it's my house, it doesn't matter if it's somebody else's house. I mean, the fact is, if you're gonna put a, an ordinance in place, it has to be for everybody, period. Regardless if you have a hundred dollars or a hundred thousand dollars, you have to do that. Uh, I, this is my time. This is my time. You had yours. So, that's what we're doing. That's what we have to do. I mean, we, you know, we're, we're not up here picking people out. I mean, I can, I can tell you, I, I, I talk all the time to different people. And I like, I like all these different people, but I can't, I can't discriminate just because I know you to say, well, I'm gonna let your weeds grow, but I don't know them, so I'm not gonna let theirs. We would be in lawsuits all the time. That's why it is the way it is. That's all I've got.
Thank you. I think we're ready for a vote. Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Next, we have a public hearing on resolution number 2023-309-R and 310-R.
Good evening. The revenue department has two items for a public hearing tonight. Um, the first one is resolution number 2023-309-R. And this is a request from BJ's Wholesale Club, Inc., doing business as BJ's Wholesale Club, store number 236. The business has requested an off-premises beer and wine license for their location at 165 Graffits Drive. Uh, the reason that this business is applying for an off-premises beer and wine license at this time is because this is a new business coming to the city of Madison. Everything is in order for this request to be considered.
And do we have the property owner here?
No, not in attendance.
Alright, we're gonna open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to address 309-R?
Margie Daly, Karen's district. Again, I'm gonna ask. I, I realize where this is located and that I don't need a map to see it. But we have been asking, requesting for a map of where all the liquor licenses are and, uh, to have again, the thousand feet within a school zone that no liquor licenses are given. Now, I understand where this is and I understand that it's BJ's and it's on Madison Boulevard. But the bottom line is, when will we get an ordinance, policy made with this thousand feet of a school zone, no more liquor stores, et cetera? We, i- is that gonna be addressed or are we just gonna let this go? And by the way, discrimination is when you don't give a lien or, uh, to a developer, but you do it to a regular person. That is discrimination also. And like I said, I have been complaining about Portal Lane and Plaza Drive about the weeds.
This is on the beer and wine license for BJ's.
Well, what I'm asking is, are we gonna get policy on these liquor licenses not to be in, within a thousand, uh, feet of a school like we had before? And I don't know why it was taken away, that, uh, thousand feet school zones. And is that what we're promoting? Let's put the liquor stores, maybe we should put the, uh, cannabis stores over there too by these, uh, schools now?
This is a beer and wine license. This is what your comments need to be addressed for.
Exactly, yes. I'm asking for the thousand feet within a school.
It's not within a thousand feet of any school.
We asked for a map of all the liquor licenses.
BJ's to show you where it's at.
Alright, let's, everybody.
I mean, seriously.
Eddie, I know where it's gonna be. It's gonna be right by Dirt Sheep. How far is that from Celtic? That's where the school is.
No, it's not where it is.
So, I should drive.
Well, anyway, we were promised the map. We never got it of all the liquor licenses in the city because we seemed to be giving them out.
Is there anyone else from the public who would like to address the pending beer and wine license from BJ's? Seeing none, we will close public hearings. Is there a motion and a second?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion, Robleski, second by Powell. Any discussion?
I think we've had it.
Ready for a vote. Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Next, upon?
Thank you. The second, um, item we have tonight is resolution number 2023-310-R. This is again a request from, uh, BJ's Wholesale Club, Inc., doing business- This is again a request from, uh, BJ's Wholesale Club, Inc., doing business as BJ's Wholesale Club, store number two three six. The request is for a lounge retail liquor class two package license at their location at one sixty-five Graphics Drive, Suite A. The Suite A, uh, this location is where the package store or liquor store will be located. Again, everything is in order for this item to be considered.
Okay. And we don't have anybody from property owners, so we will open public hearing.
Okay, so I am a little confused on this, cause you got it on three oh nine and three ten. I understand they don't have a current liquor license, so have, they have to apply for one. But then this is a lounge?
One is beer, the first one is beer, this one is liquor.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else from the public like to address this issue? Seeing none, we will close public hearing. Need a motion and a second?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by Robleski, second by Powell. Any discussion, questions? Ready for a vote. Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Go with Powell.
Powell?
Aye.
He pointed to you.
Flip a coin.
Okay. Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
And Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. The department reports beginning with legal.
Legal just has one resolution for your consideration, and it's resolution number twenty twenty-three dash two forty-nine dash R. This would be for authorizing an agreement with Mass and Utility for the placement of meter readers on the city utility poles.
May I approve?
Second. Motion second, any discussion, questions?
So it's just meters for that particular pole?
No, it's not a meter on the pole, it's actually a meter reader. It's a, it's a, um, radio receptor on the pole that meet, reads the meters in that area within so many feet of that pole. So they no longer will have to have a truck with a big long antenna to drive down your road. These radio signal receptors on the poles will read the meters in that area and send that to Madison Utilities.
That's correct. And I'll also say that, uh, we have a provision here that basically requires MU to give a map showing where they're gonna be. We get to look at it, figure out, you know, what it's gonna look like, making sure this conforms with whatever polls, et cetera. Uh, so we have approval over where they place them and how they place them as well.
Is there any cost involved?
Uh, twenty-five dollars is what they're gonna pay per permit for each, uh, of the meters, as I understand.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, ready for a vote. Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Planning.
Eddie's favorite person.
Oh, you are my favorite person.
The item got continued, yeah.
Please scratch them out.
There we go.
Oh, that's right. Sorry.
Uh, first item is proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash two forty-one, and this is for the annexation of the property we were discussing earlier during the public hearing. Again, this is a little over one acre, it's an existing single-family home and they're requesting to annex into the city. Planning commission staff are supporting the request and there was nobody to speak against us at the planning commission meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion?
Does this fit within our growth plan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ready for a vote. Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes.
The next item is resolution number twenty twenty-three dash three eleven dash R. This is to authorize professional services agreement with an architectural firm, uh, to consider additional improvements at Toyota Field. The contract amount is not to exceed a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars, and this, um, the contract would, um, have the architect create schematic design drawings for both the visitor clubhouse as well as additional floors above that clubhouse that could be evaluated. Um, once the schematic design is completed, then we'd be able to have some cost estimating done, bring that back to the city council and then you could make a decision about how you wanna proceed.
May I approve?
Second.
Any motion, Powell, second. Uh, Spears? Okay.
Don't matter.
Um, open for questions, discussion?
So I think, I just wanna make sure, I know I've heard Greg say this, just confirm it, we have Rush, the, I don't remember the name of his company, down in Montgomery, that is looking at the additional cost of building above and beyond what Major League has required right now, that, what is the benefit of that? What is the cost, you know, the return on that investment? What is, what does that look like? That is being done, right?
Correct.
So before we vote on spending that money, we'll have that answer as to whether that's a benefit, uh, whether there is a return on that investment or not. So, uh, that's not a question, that's a statement.
Correct.
All right.
Is that on the clubhouse itself or the extension?
What's that now?
It's, it's, is that on the suite extension or just on the clubhouse part itself? Which was that including?
Uh, I know it's including in the eleven and a half million estimate that is on top of the six million dollar estimate, which is for the base piece, which are to, which is for that base piece to meet the requirements that Major League Baseball has set out.
Okay, so this is in the?
This is the, uh, this is the, you wanna build an additional eleven and a half, right?
Okay, just clarify.
Yeah, no, thanks.
Any other questions?
I have some comments.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it goes back to what I was saying earlier that our, you know, the role of city government is to provide for the basic services of the citizens and especially portraying the safety. Now, when the city first was doing the discussions for the stadium, there were very many, lots, lots of citizens who were very concerned that the cost would end up just coming to the city, to the, to the citizens as things happened as opposed, paid for by the stadium itself and the proceeds coming from the stadium. Uh, and so apparently there was a fund put together to protect the citizens from that, and so for the first four years, uh, the fund would be added to, there was a set group of maintenance costs or a fees that would go into it. And when it hit over one point four million dollars, then we would start setting aside three hundred thousand dollars during that year. And after four years, we just set aside three hundred thousand dollars. So in the future, we would have the maintenance money. Well, kinda as predicted by some of these people that weren't happy with the stadium, maintenance costs came sooner than later. Uh, so in a previous meeting, I've asked, how much money has the stadium contributed to the capital maintenance fund? And y'all did provide the numbers and I appreciated that. For one year, it was one point four million? Okay. And just for clarification, it includes sale of liquor and tax license fees and revenue sharing items, which includes parking, naming rights and non-baseball events. So in twenty twenty-two, it came in at one million four hundred and, yeah, one million four hundred three seventy-seven. The next year, it's estimated for twenty twenty-three at one million four hundred ninety-one thousand one forty-eight. So if you look at over, the money coming in over fourteen hun- one million point four, you've got about ninety-one point five. So you look at that number and that's all that's come in so far. But yet, we have spent to date, five hundred and thirty-seven thousand has been spent by the city to do the maintenance, the different things that have come in that needed to be paid for. So I'm looking at that and saying, oh, the taxpayers have already done quite generous in paying for things that we thought we would have to pay for later. But yet, these people were right, we're ending up getting these costs much sooner and it's coming to the taxpayers. It's not, the money isn't being generated from the funds as we had hoped. So I look at this and I wonder, well, why are we now, you know, why are the pa- the taxpayers having to take this six million dollars on? Now, I want the stadium to, to be very successful, I don't want it to fail, of course I don't. But neither do I wanna just accept that the city itself has to cover every cost or the whole venture's doomed. So what about the investors? Do the investors, I mean, they surely want the stadium to also succeed, so why is it always the taxpayers instead of the investors that have to take on this extra money? Uh, I'm sure there was, when Ball Corp took over, there was always a team, when the contracts, right? They had to provide the team to be in the stadium, was that not part of the contract, I'm asking?
I'm not sure I'm understanding your question.
Okay, well, it just seems like from a con- the conversations we had last week, that everyone was afraid if we don't keep on pumping taxpayer money into the stadium, they'll just, the ball teams will go away. Now, I'm not real sure that that's true, because why would we sign a contract that we were at the whim of a ball team coming and going for that stadium? So I'm just assuming there was some contract that gave us a, a net, a safety net? Am I right?
So we, we have, there is an agreement between the city and Ball Corp. Um, both parties have obligations. One of our obligations is to maintain the stadium, and because MLB has adopted new standards, we have an obligation to have the stadium meet those standards, which is why we are unfortunately having to go through this.
Why can the investors not meet us halfway, since they are also have a stake in whether this succeeds? Why is it the taxpayers only?
I think that the council will be taking that broad question up. Um, you can take it up now, certainly, but, um, I would think it would be more timely once we have, um, a sense of what this might really cost and you would have an opportunity to figure out if coun- what council wants to pay for and how it's going to be paid for.
There are many opportunities. This is to go do the drawings.
I understand what it's for, so we're coming up with a hundred ninety-three thousand dollars?
Mm-hmm.
Of taxpayer money to find out how much more. And I've seen us do this before where we'll just keep on tacking on and then all of a sudden, well, we've already spent this much. It's like, should we not say, hey, is there not a way we can negotiate now with Ball Corp or with the investors? So it's not just the taxpayers?
I think we have a choice for the taxpayers, and what that, that choice is, is we can pay a hundred and ninety-three dol- a hundred ninety-three thousand dollars to get a drawing, and that drawing will be a couple-fold. A, it will be just plain, basic, um, one level, um, what is that, uh?
Locker room.
Locker room. Um, and then it will give us additional options. That's what that money's for, to, to make those drawings. So regardless if you do it for the one floor or the other floor, that's what makes a difference. So for sure, I think the thing that makes the most sense is you have to get that drawing, and regardless if you build that, that upper part now or later, or not at all, it's only a couple, I mean, you know, I'm just estimating here, I'm, I mean, I don't know a whole lot about concrete, but I know a little. But, you know, if you pour a little bit extra concrete and pour your footer wider and deeper, that allows you later on to go up. If you don't do that, you have a one-level building, that's all you will ever have, and you never have an opportunity to do those other options. So that's what those drawings are for, is to give us an idea of, okay, here's what this could look like, and here's, you know, what it would potentially cost, or option one, option two, or option three. Once we have that, then we can take that, go to Ball Corp and say, okay, you know, if we do option one, it costs us six million dollars, period, that's it. And the city gets that building. If you go to option two, it costs, I think it was nine million dollars, and there's some shared cost there. If you go to option three, you know, there's some shared cost over a certain period of time, and after that period of time is paid off, then that's a revenue-producing building. So it's easy to answer questions today with no, that's easy, but to look out, you know, down the road to realize that, hey, there's a potential to do something to gain some economic benefit, that's what you're doing. That's what we did years ago, that's why the, the, the multi-use facility is out there, that's also why you have restaurants that you can eat at, you can go, you can get clothes, that's why you can do all those things, is because the foresight will spit into that. And that's, that's what it is, uh, worst case, best case, and, you know, better case. Worst, better, and best.
Well, I understand the incentive of bringing in entertainment, which we have done by building the stadium to begin with. Now, to continue to do that just so more profit can come in, how is that keeping with our, we're here to provide services for the people? We want to have all that instead of?
The profits that come in? Goes towards cities. Goes towards to pay for it. That's where those revenues go.
It just looks like we're adding more. We're already bringing in revenues, we're already having to pay for the stadium itself. It's great bringing in more money to pay off the debt that we already have, but we are not really, we are not, in my, to me, as a government official, I'm not here to make sure that the Ball Corp or the stadium brings in extra profit, I want us to cover what we have, but adding more, more?
So you would rather, you would rather pay for, just pay for a building outright, and you own a building, or would you rather pay a little bit more and have that little bit more pay for that building outright?
Well?
That's, that's a, that's a six million dollar savings. I can assure you, our citizens would appreciate it.
But after the six million wasn't gonna be bringing extra money, it was when you were bringing in the, the suites at eleven point five million. Now, if we've gotta take out a loan to get, to buy, to build the suites to bring in more money?
But we don't?
We don't know yet.
We don't have any of that analysis.
Right, so why are we now having to put forward a hundred and, what is it? Hundred and ninety-eight?
Ninety-three.
Hundred and ninety-three thousand, and we still have a lot of questions about what it is we really want to do with that, and how, whether we as taxpayers have to take on the whole bill, or whether Ball Corp or their investors are willing to do more with us.
Because the cost to do the drawings for the base versus the base and the options, that delta is likely negligible. At the same time, that cost still has to be done. And then when you look at the analysis, it still has to be done to see whether it's a cost benefit, I mean, a- all that stuff's in play, and then you still have time to negotiate with the, the, the investors, and then you can look and go, as part of that investment, hey, we spent a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars to go get this drawing. Consider that part of our investment, part of our money. But that whole discussion has yet to be had. But that discussion can't even really be had, that discussion really can't even be had if you're not even gonna get, gonna go get drawings, at all. Cause there's no discussion to ha- to have.
And part of the reason why we're asking, or we're, we're recommending the council take this step at this time is, is because of timing. Um, the new visitor clubhouse is supposed to be open and operational for the start of the twenty twenty-five season. So we are up against a clock, um, you know, in looking at construction schedules, it would've been nice if we had been here several months ago with this piece, um, but we were trying every possible avenue to avoid having to do this and looking at how the existing facility could be used or other buildings could be used to satisfy this, and we just couldn't find any other ways to squeeze anything out of the existing facility. So if we were to wait until some potential agreement is worked out between the city and Ball Corp, we have zero chance of meeting the construction deadline that MLB has imposed.
With two weeks delay, it'd be too much.
Would two weeks delay be too much to see if? Yeah, as I said, we should, and it, well, I think that it's unreasonable to think it would take only two weeks. And we've already waited a couple of months that we shouldn't have had, we shouldn't have waited in hindsight. So this work needs to be done and I think Mr. Seifert is correct. The cost to do the schematic design for just the clubhouse versus the additional layers is pretty negligible and it would be in the city's best interest to move this forward so that we have a chance of being in compliance with MLB standards in twenty twenty-five.
It's less than one-third of one percent to buy those, just if you're going with the base plan.
To buy what?
The plans.
Just to buy the plans.
Would give us something to actually get an estimate on.
Otherwise, you can't make a decision. I mean, you're, you're guessing. I mean, tell me, tell me how much it costs to build that, that, I mean, you know?
Visitor's clubhouse.
I mean, yeah, how much would it cost to build a visitor's clubhouse?
Obviously, I don't know that, Teddy.
And, and I don't either, and that's the, that's what we're trying to get to.
This will determine it.
Right, I understand that, but I would like to see that, that the investors are willing to work with us to do this drawing forward.
Karen, we have to get them the information to take to them. We can't just say, okay, we want you to pay for all of this. We're gonna have to give them some data and this will start the process of finding out how much the project is gonna be. Then we can approach Ball Corp. This is the first step.
I have one question, just following up from what Karen was going through with the multi-use maintenance fund. The hundred ninety-three thousand, is that coming out of next fiscal year's multi-use venue fund?
It's coming out of the current balance of the fund. Those monies is Roger's still up, he's not here still. So I guess we're gonna be starting the new fiscal year, right? So this hundred ninety-three will come out of next fiscal year, but there's X dollars in that fund and it's just gonna come out of that fund. Okay. All right, are we ready for a vote? Okay. I think we've got a motion in a second. Right.
I think Connie had a second.
Okay. Connie's got the?
Connie got that jump ball.
All right. Ready for a vote?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Next. Your next two items are related. They're also both first readings, so we're not asking you to take action on them this evening. The first one is proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash thirty fourteen. This would be to amend chapter eight of the city code to include regulations to allow for murals in certain locations in the city. If you recall, we had several work sessions on this in May, June, and July earlier this year. And the murals would be allowed in the commercial areas of our T and D district, which is the commercial area at Village in Oakland Springs and where Taco Mama and Mo's are in Town Madison. It would also be allowed in the UC district, which covers most of the rest of Town Madison, and also in our B one zoning, which is predominantly downtown. There's a few remnant M one parcels on Hughes Road, but B one is basically our downtown. The regulations that are in the ordinance are unchanged from your last iteration where we had everybody buy in from whether it was the Madison Arts allowance. We also had our downtown historic preservation commission folks take a look at it. The second item is proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash three fifteen. This would be amending chapter twenty-eight of the city code. And this would be to establish a mural advisory board. You'll recall, there was recommendations for membership. They would also have staggered terms, which was something that you had discussed. And again, the format of that board is the same as what you discussed. Prior to tonight's meeting, I did send an email out to both the MVP that had provided comments on the mural regs and also to the Madison Arts Alliance to let them know that this was coming forward and I saw one of them here this evening. So again, this is just the first reading and we'll ask you to take action on this at your next meeting. Thank you, Mary Beth. Thank you. Okay, any miscellaneous announcements?
Just have one announcement. The city will be providing a free flu shot clinic this Wednesday, day after tomorrow. It's from nine AM to two PM, no charge to our residents. Just come in and bring your identification and get your flu shot and be healthy this winter.
And said it?
Motion to adjourn?
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Lessen up here, give it away, talking to our residents. They also, when you saw the community center, we have a group, Madison Visiting Partners is raising money. Steven Allen and Allison Lessman have sponsored the reception desk. And so again, we have folks who continue to step up and things have happened each and every day and we're thrilled about that. So is that kinda getting ready to flow? One thing that we have, hopefully that comes up here, is we need to stay connected. You know, the thing that we have is on Madisonale dot com website, there are so many different things that you can sign up that will send you information either through email or your cell or your phone to give you the updates that you're looking for. Obviously, we have all the social media platforms that are there that in turn continue to push this information out for you guys to have. But probably one thing that I wanna make sure you recognize is since we came into office in two thousand and eight, we've had two hours every two weeks, we specify for Madison, citizens, and anyone else who wants to?